Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, February 18 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here in person. Thanks for joining us online. I'd like to welcome the scouts from Troop 731. Thanks for being here, fellas. You get extra credit if you stay at the end of the meeting, so.
[laughing]
Appreciate you guys being here. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll tonight, Tom.
Councilmember Staley?
Here.
Recky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Eilish?
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
We'd like to welcome back Pastor Brett Best with Emmanuel Baptist Church. Pastor Best has been here several times. To give our invocation, always appreciate you coming, sir. So if you would rise for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in an attitude of prayer. Our God and Father, Creator of all, we thank you for the privilege of gathering this evening for the exercise of the great privilege of democracy. Let us not take for granted this privilege, though it comes to us on a regular basis, though it is sometimes difficult to execute. Let us be cooperative this evening. Let us seek the common good. Let us set aside anything that resembles a self-interest and promote the good of our community and all its citizens. I want to pray especially tonight for those organizations and persons who supply shelter to those who are homeless, who supply food to those who are in need. And, God our Father, we pray for your wisdom. We thank you for our city leaders and ask you to guide their actions. Make this a great evening, we pray. Let those who agree say amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started with our main agenda, starting with item four, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes to the consent agenda. Counselor Recky.
I would move to remove item 21 from the consent agenda.
All right, pull item 21. Any other changes, council? All right, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion approved by Counselor Selberg and seconded by Sale. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to next item, which is our regular agenda. Look for any motions on that.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion on that, council? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We're at the general public input portion of our agenda tonight. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in the agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone from the public forward for general public input. And clerk, please note our time right now is 7:04. Anyone for public input tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. We come before you with something that's making our heads scratch.
Can you state your names, please?
Oh, I'm Berdine Whipke, Mark Whipke.
Okay, thank you.
We moved back from Iowa to Sioux Falls partly because of my husband's job and partly because we wanted to retire here. I had owned a restaurant in a Victorian home in Iowa, and I looked into doing the exact same thing here in Sioux Falls. It was dining only, reservation-only dining with a six-course meal. I pulled clients in from 225 miles, including Sioux Falls. It was a destination spot. Everything was 100% made, homemade. I offered 14 kinds of meats and at least 12 desserts to finish out the evening. We went down to the city department because we wanted to do this correctly. We went down to different ones that I knew I needed to go to. And we went down to the health department, and Kim at the health department said, quote, "You can do anything you want to as long as you have a commercial kitchen in your house." I said, "Fine." We contacted the state. I was told the exact same thing. We went down to the zoning planning committee office, and they told us that we could also do it. So we started a kitchen in our basement, all to code, all the correct way. We have about six grand into our project. Last Monday, the 10th, I got a call from Jason at the planning saying that we cannot do this in our home. I was told I needed to have an apartment above the house with separate heating and air conditioning, a firewall, a separate entrance to living quarters, and inspection beams in the basement for the load of bearing for more than 20 people in the house. So how does anyone ever have a gathering in their house for Christmas or Thanksgiving if they have more than 20 people? We were also told that parking was an issue, but we have a corner lot with parking for at least 12 cars, along with borrowing space from the neighbors now and then, which are all for my venue. We do not want a restaurant like everyone else. We do not want to be in a strip mall, nor do we want some metal cookie cutter building like everyone else. That's the whole point of this venue. We want people to be in our home, and that's what drove my business in Iowa. We were very unique, and no one felt that they had to be in a hurry so that we could turn the tables. It was an intimate dining time for everyone, and we strongly discouraged cell phones. This is what we are wanting to do, provide a dining experience in Sioux Falls with no advertising, no signage, reservation-only dining for about 30 people, host get-togethers, wedding rehearsals, retirement parties, and Christmas. I was told this will be in my home, and so we will be setting the rules. We don't understand why the Airbnbs are allowed in this city when none of these requirements, such as separate living quarters, firewalls, or separate heating and air conditioning units, are required to have people sleep in your house where they could easily start fires or smoke.
Berdine, I know we've all got emails on this, and we're working on it as a city.
Okay.
I believe I saw a lot of emails going around on this today.
Okay.
Time's up on public input. Some of our staff here, we're working on it. We're going to be back in touch with you.
Thank you much, because we will do this somewhere, if not in Sioux Falls.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight?
Good evening. Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and I'm here to talk about speech at public forums. All right, this is kind of a follow-up from a talk a couple of weeks ago. At city council, you've got a couple of different sets of roles to think about. There's the executive order 151, there's a city ordinance, and lo and behold, there's actually the First Amendment to consider about the same problem. And the First Amendment says that Congress can make no laws abridging the freedom of speech. We're all familiar with that. Now, I was just browsing around the internet, and this thing popped up. It says that the government has limited ability to impose content-based restrictions on public dialogues. Well, all right, that's what this particular article quotes, and that may relate to limitations on electronic public input here tonight. So I might want to check it out. In the same article, it talks about social media and blocking people. I know there was some discussion about that a few months ago, and according to this ruling by the U.S. Court of Appeals, you can't block critics on your Facebook page if you're a public official. Well, now we know. There's no more doubts. And here's the source where I found both of those two references. You can look at it if you need a little more information, and it's nice when you find important things accidentally, which is how I came across this. And as is always, we should find something beautiful to enjoy, even if it is winter. So there's a nice picture of my backyard, and you can see that I grew corn. So have a good evening, everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Good evening.
Hi, Stephen Ciano. I didn't know I was going to speak, but hearing what David just presented, that rings with me, too. I've tried to get my emails revealed to the public and everyone else's as well, because I feel the public has a right to know. I also feel that severing our right to speak in whatever other manner you have done, and I've been repeatedly cut off where I felt I should not have been, that is improper, unjust, and unlawful. And I feel that we should, and I ask that all of you get together on this. Any one of you can propose it, that you restore the five-minute rule. And another thing about my predecessor here is when he was running for mayor before our present administration, he was, I feel, unjustly denied the right, and the public was denied the right to vote for him. So he was blocked out of it. You people can devise various ways of blocking out public input while you do put on a show and make it appear that you are serving the public. You may be serving other interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, clerk, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Next item was the item that was pulled, subitem 21 to agenda item six, approval of contracts and agreements. Department is water reclamation. Project description, water reclamation facility expansion amendment to legal services agreement, vendor Woods Fuller Schultz &amp; Smith, PC, and the amount of $50,000.
Counselor Recky.
I ask that this contract be pulled because it's a contract for services with Woods Fuller Law Firm, and my daughter is a partner at Woods Fuller Law Firm. Although she will not be working this contract, there's still a question of the financial, of me voting on it from a conflict of interest standpoint, because there's a possibility that financially the benefits might flow to her. So I'm removing myself from the vote and the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councilor. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, someone want to make a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, motion approved by Sale. Have a second. Seconded by Counselor Erickson. Any discussion on this, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Counselor Nitzer, you want to grant Counselor Recky, and we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 19, transfer of 2019-20 retail malt beverage and 2020 retail wine license from Josiah's LP, Josiah's Coffee House and Cafe, 104 West 12th Street, to Three's Company LLC, Josiah's Coffee House Cafe and Bakery, 104 West 12th Street. Item 20, special one-day liquor license for T/ A.J.'s Wine Spirits and Cigars to be operated at Open Space Event Hall, 6212 South Pinnacle Place for Improv Night on February 22, 2020. Item 21, special one-day liquor license for Zoological Society of Sioux Falls to be operated at the Grapevine Zoo and Delbridge Museum, 805 South Kowanus Avenue for a fundraiser on February 22, 2020. Item 22, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Senior Citizens Services Incorporated Active Generations, 2300 West 46th Street for special events on February 22, March 12, April 26, and June 25, 2020. And item 23, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Augustana University to be operated at the Elman Center, 2505 South Grange Avenue for a special event on March 7, 2020.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on items 19 through 23.
All right, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items here tonight? All right, council, do you have any questions for Jamie on 19 to 23?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Nitzer.
All right, motion approved by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Nitzer. Any discussion amongst the council on this? All right, we'll take a vote, then.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 24, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of East 12th Street and east of South Six Mile Road, just west of the Big Sioux River from the RR Single Family Residential Rural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 11597-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is Dudley Defenbaugh. It's located just east of the Willow Run Golf Course, just north of Arrowhead Parkway. It's about 4.9 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at including this 4.9 acres into the rest of what's left of the acreage in Arbor's Edge Development, and then constructing single-family homes and finishing out that development.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, council, do you have questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion to approve by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer? Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Item 25, please.
Item 25, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located west of I-229, south of East 34th Street North, and east of North St. Paul Avenue from the RD-1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban and RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT-2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 11599-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero with the following conditions. One, the 84 attached dwelling traditional eight-unit townhome form is only allowed to build up to a twin home or duplex. And two, a six-foot screening fence is required instead of a four-foot fence within the Level 8 buffer yard. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
The applicant owner here is Habitat for Humanity. It's located south of East 34th Street North and west of I-229. It's about 4.43 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is Habitat for Humanity is looking at constructing a twin home development with roughly 14 twin homes and 28 total units. They have been working with some of the neighbors around there, and some of the neighbors had requested a six-foot fence in the buffer yard instead of the required four-foot. So that's one of the reasons why the Planning Commission put that condition on there, and I believe Habitat didn't have an issue with that, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this one? Counselor Starr?
Thank you. Jason, tell me a little bit about why they were concerned from four-foot to six-foot, that they, I mean, I get the additional privacy and separation, but it seems, it's unusual for the Planning Commission to do that. So give me a little idea of what they were thinking.
A little bit of it was just Habitat going out and working with the neighbors and, hey, what do you want along here? And also, the other reason is when you go to that RT-2 zoning district, that rear yard setback becomes a little bit less than what it is in the, excuse me, in the RD-1. So that's another reason why you might need a little bit more separation, just because the setback's reduced.
Thank you.
Other questions for Jason, council? Counselor Staley?
Jason, how many units will this be total?
It'll be 14 twin homes and 28 units.
Are these going to be low-income or affordable? How do we say that? What's the right term?
Accessible housing, the Habitat's model. And I believe the applicants here, if you want to discuss a little bit more of what they do.
Yes.
But I bet it's similar to what they do with single families, so.
Or do we want to, is this the time for him to come up?
Could you call him up if you'd like, yeah.
Thank you, Jason.
Good evening.
Yeah, Mayor, Council. Rocky Walker, Executive Director at Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sioux Falls. To answer the question regarding affordable accessible housing, yes, so it will follow Habitat's typical model, where typically we serve families 30% to 60% area median income. There may be opportunities for families, particular applicants, up to 80% during this next application period, but it will follow Habitat's typical application model.
What's the square footage going to be?
Yeah, so the homes are going to be different. So one of the concerns that we had initially was just density, right? And so we're actually going to alternate the twin homes between four-bedroom homes, four-bedroom twin homes, and then two-bedroom twin homes to reduce the density. So there's going to be some size variances throughout the block. They will be slab-on-grade, but again, there's going to be variances in the twin homes on size.
But like, are we talking 1,000 square foot minimum?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, over 1,000 square foot.
And are these people going to have any sweat equity into the?
Yeah, so all of the applicants are going to be required to put in at least 300 sweat equity hours to help build their homes alongside volunteers from the Sioux Falls community. In addition, you know, our applicants pay 100% of appraised value for their homes. So I mean, these homes aren't being given to the applicants. They're working with Habitat, community members, local businesses, and local leaders like yourselves to help make this a possibility.
And then do they have to stay in their home a certain amount of time before they can sell it?
Yeah, so what we actually have is a shared appreciation model that we implemented. So, you know, obviously circumstances happen to everybody where you may have to sell a home sometime. Could happen to me, it could happen to you. But with our model, then, the longer that the homeowners stay in the home, the more equity that they have. Where if they were to sell in the first five years, they would not be gaining that equity. And then after that, they start gaining that equity a percentage each year until 20 years is up.
And what's going to be the cost? What's the range of cost for these homes?
Yes, we don't have assessments yet done on the cost, but they will pay 100% of appraised value. Just throwing some numbers out there, you could be anywhere between $140,000 to, you know, $155,000 per side. But again, that's a very rough estimate.
But would they be like $250,000?
So we'll put one family in each side, and they will just be paying for their half.
Right, but I'm just trying to get a sense of what the range for this affordable accessible housing is going to be. What's going to be the top?
Yeah, so the top value, the cost of the home is probably going to be probably around that $150,000 range. But again, the reason that it makes it accessible and affordable for Habitat families is they're paying a 0% interest mortgage over 30 years. So if you look at a home of the cost of $150,000, you're saving in interest $130,000. You're cutting those monthly payments substantially, and that's what keeps the homes affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Rocky. Any other questions for Rocky while we have him up here? All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions for Jason? Is there a motion someone want to make on this item?
Move to approve, Sale.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Counselor Sale, seconded by Erickson to set a date for second reading for March 3. Any other discussion on this, council? Counselor Sale?
Just have a short statement. As we struggle with affordable housing in Sioux Falls, this is absolutely what the community needs to do, and it has my full support.
All right. Other discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to our next item.
Item 26, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 808 South Grange Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD-1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 11585-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
The applicant owner here is Cal Pell. It's located at 808 South Grange Avenue, just east of Sanford Parking Lot. It's about .16 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at changing the existing single-family home into a duplex. As you can see, the applicant does have the sufficient parking spaces off the alley on the east side of the property.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item tonight? All right, council, you have any questions for Jason on this?
Move to set the second reading to Tuesday, March 3.
Second. Sale.
All right, motion by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Sale to set a second reading for Tuesday, March 3. Any discussion on that, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 27.
Item 27, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of East Arrowhead Parkway, west of South Veterans Parkway, and north of East 18th Street from the RA-3 Apartment Residential High Density District to the CN Conservation and RD-1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts, number 11622-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
The applicant owner here is Troy Dolly. It's located just south of the Walmart off of East Arrowhead Parkway and South Foss Avenue. It's about 1.4 acres in size. Excuse me. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at shifting Foss Avenue slightly to the east, and then a little portion of that RA-3 will be on the same parcel as the RD-1, so they're rezoning to that RD-1. And then they're looking at doing it a little detention pond, and that would be what the conservation's going for.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this one?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Counselor Selberg and seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3. Any discussion on that one, council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 28?
Item 28, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East Bison Trail and South Vineyard Avenue from the O Office District to the RD-2 Town Home Residential Suburban District, number 11602-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
The applicant owner here is Brady Hyde with Empire Homes. It's located southeast of the Roundabout on 69th Street and South Southeastern Avenue. It's about .79 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing two townhome buildings on this parcel. This is kind of an overview of the existing Emerald Valley II subdivision. And even though this office lot is going from office to RD-2, staff feels that there's still that transition that we look for, where we have single-family to twin homes to townhomes to office to commercial as you get to that major intersection of 69th and Southeastern. We did have neighbors come to the Planning Commission meeting who voiced concerns on the height of the buildings. Most of the structures out there are one-story. It's important to note, though, that the existing office zoning allows 35 feet and two stories. The proposed RD-2 zoning allows 35 feet and two stories, and even the single-family zoning district allows two stories and 35 feet. So the height is not changing. A letter was also provided to you today from those 12 property owners with their concerns on the rezoning, and I believe some of them are here tonight, so.
All right, thank you, Jason. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on that item tonight? Go ahead and come forward. Good evening.
My name's Travis Selkey. I'm at 6220 South Vineyard, so this will be kind of kitty-corner from my house. I was kind of in disagreement with the height kind of thing. I know it's the businesses, if it was to stay a business lot, could be built to that same height or, you know, whatever. But if you look at the actual structures that are out in the neighborhood, there's three current new businesses that have just been built off of, is it Maple Rock Trail there? There's three businesses kind of right off of that corner there that are all single-level, nice little small brick businesses. Even to the north of the Great Life, which is at the Roundabout of 69th, there's another new business to the north of there that just got built. Again, single-level, you know, I think a two-story structure would kind of impose on the aesthetics of the neighborhood. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Travis. Thanks for being here. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Karen Sherman, 6210 South Vineyard Avenue. I'm one of the homeowners, and I have a twin home right now. And there isn't anything in in our whole neighborhood that's over one story. Even the homes, single homes in back of me, they may have a walkout basement, but they're not two-story. So I don't really see the need to have like a fourplex or two-story anything. It's going to change the whole dynamic of the neighborhood. I've heard that down the road, there's going to be fourplexes on the other side. Let them stay there, and let the office buildings stay together, but they don't have to be mixed in with our neighborhood. I think that's going to spoil the look of the whole neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Karen. Sir, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Tim Edman. I live at sixty-three oh nine South Vineyard. First, I'd like to actually compliment your planning department staff, even though I obviously very much disagree with them, but over the last ten days, I've asked them several questions, and their responses have been very helpful, and they've been very professional, very courteous, and so I appreciate that. Secondly, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration. I'm sure you have more important things to address than what is built on this small parcel of land. Just out of curiosity, I did a quick Google search this afternoon, and apparently, the city of Sioux Falls encompasses a land area of seventy-three square miles, which is about forty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty acres, and we're here to dispute what happens on a parcel of acre, I mean, a parcel of land that is less than four-fifths of an acre. Sorry about that, but this tract, Track Seven, is very important to our neighborhood. I think Mr. Bieber mentioned that, and maybe some of you have seen the letter we sent to Councilmember Kylie, we had twelve neighbors sign onto that letter. I'm sure we would have had more neighbors signing onto it, but as you know, people are busy, they're not always home, and I will point out that we've heard from some neighbors who just recently looked at the letter and would also concur with some of those concerns. And I'll even say that of the neighbors that we talked to, every one of them agreed. Nobody declined to sign the letter. Nevertheless, I think when you look at that particular map, if you will, it, it's helpful to think of Track Seven as a small sliver on the edge and at the end of a peninsula. The peninsula at the tip, of course, is adjacent to Bison Trail. On the west, you have Maple Rock. On the east, you have Vineyard, and the peninsula basically connects up with the mainland to the south, which is an open farm field that's still being actively farmed. And the reason I describe it as a peninsula, well, I'll get to that in a moment, but if you just kind of keep that picture in mind. Also, the concept plan that was displayed there is just exactly that. It's a concept plan. We don't know actually how many units will be built on, on this tract.
Tim, I'll give you thirty more seconds, and you can sure come back second reading to and speak to this as well, and you know, five minutes, so.
Okay, well then, let me cut to the bottom line. We're not saying that we're opposed to any zoning change. What we're saying is basically, just because it might look reasonable on a zoning map, doesn't necessarily mean it makes sense on the ground and in reality. What I'm suggesting is that there needs to be a little bit more work done on this whole peninsula. The peninsula is owned by a number of different developers. It's zoned differently, some office, some R S, some R one. At the suggestion of Councilmember Kylie, we have reached out to Mr. Brady Hyde, and he has graciously agreed to meet with us to try to discuss that. So what I'm asking, or what I'm suggesting, is that you give us a little more time, and rather than move it to second reading, give us some time to see if we can work with the planning department staff.
Got it.
And to come up with a better plan for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Anyone else here to speak to this item tonight? Please come forward. Good evening.
Jared Mau, sixty-three oh five, Tim's neighbor, just here to support what they have to say. I was one of the ones that were out of town, unable to really, I'm just coming into this, looking for a little bit more time. I'm a very young family, and my portion of our property is on the edge of that, that is to the south, that would be zoned R S. I guess my biggest concern is if this is rezoned to R D two, that my initial investment in my home, I see homeownership as an investment, I'm concerned as to what would happen if that area to the south were to be rezoned from R S to, say, an R D two in the future, which could potentially lower my potential income on my home. So just trying to get some more time as well to meet with Brady, and just to see what we can do in this area, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jared. Anyone else wish to speak on this item here? All right, we'll move to the council. Do you have any questions for Jason you want to ask on this item, Council? Councilor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, am I, how many two-unit, two-story units are we looking at being built?
Like the applicant or the neighbor said, this is just a concept plan, but he's showing a fourplex on that south lot, and then that north one, I mean, it starts getting pretty small there at the north, so I don't even know if he'd get a fourplex on there. So it looks like it'd be one fourplex and maybe a threeplex.
Fourplex and a threeplex, okay. And my second question is, am I understanding correctly that the homeowners and Mr. Hyde have agreed to meet sometime soon?
I, I guess, I hadn't heard that from, but the applicant, Brady, could, could discuss that, but we had, we had talked about meeting with them after first reading, so.
Okay.
Brady, come on up, man.
Brady. Brady Hyde, forty-six fifteen South Tech Link Circle, and with Empire Homes. To answer your question, yes, we were, reached yesterday and said that we could meet here this evening ahead of the meeting, or anytime next week. So within one day of being contacted, we were happy to meet, so.
So you will be meeting?
Absolutely. I don't know, we, we left the ball in their court as far as saying we can meet anytime next week, Tuesday to Thursday, five-thirty to six-thirty in the evening.
If by chance this was deferred a week or two, is that going to throw everything off the tracks?
You know, the only, the only pushback I would have on that is, we've had public notification out there for a month, maybe more, and within twenty-four hours of us being notified, we were happy to set the meeting, even happy to meet here tonight. So I, I don't necessarily, wouldn't want to see, I guess, us derailed too much, and I think we can have that meeting here as early as tomorrow, Thursday, or next week, and prior second reading, I believe.
Okay.
Councilor Erickson?
The other thing, I just want to remind the councils that there's no meeting next week, so essentially, they have two weeks until the March third meeting to come up with some sort of solution, and then if that time there needs to be something else changed, we certainly can, but I, I would hate to delay it from the March third meeting any further, because everything could be remedied by that point. I mean, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense. I mean, there's always options at the second reading, so I'm grateful that you're willing to meet with them and have those conversations. The other thing that I think, I, I certainly want to be mindful to the folks that spoke, regardless if it's zoned or not, the height can still be the same. So we're not really changing anything if you have it be office building. It can still be two-story office buildings with apartments on the second floor and office space in the bottom or whatever, so it's the same, and so that's where I, I have a hard time with, we can't impose those restrictions, when it would be the same regardless of what it's zoned between those two. So I would, when the time comes, I'm happy to make the motion to set the second reading to March third.
Any more questions for Brady while we got him up here? Otherwise, I'll let him.
Can I ask one for Justin?
Yeah, Jason, come on.
Sorry.
Brady, go ahead and have a seat, man.
If you don't mind, I was, if you guys don't mind, I'd have, I had a few things. So we've heard some of the, the pushback or concern has been demographic, whether it's a first-time home buyer, and whether it is or not, it's, it's still a good client. These, this product type will be offered around two-hundred thousand, which is only four to five thousand dollars less than what we sold the, the product type across the street for. Additionally, as you see up there, you know, we're kitty-corner to some live work, which will likely be three and four stories tall, so I think it is a good transition, and if it was to go to office, it would, a large portion of that sliver would turn into a parking lot, which I think would be less ideal for a neighborhood versus townhome, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Brady. Jason, Councilor Sale, you have a question for Jason?
What kind of zoning could we impose on this lot to keep it one-story only?
We don't, I don't think we have a zoning district that allows anything that's just one-story, to be honest with you.
Any other questions, Councilor Staley?
Well, a, a comment. Jason, you did, you sent that email out at noon today with their letters around noonish, and I, I apologize to the citizens that I didn't see that. I've been busy all day, so this is kind of late notice to, to hear the concerns that you have. I wanted to say that I'm, I would love to come out and look at this, and I think the gentleman who said seeing it on a map is different than actually seeing it in person. So I'm a, I'm a firm believer in site visits when there's any contentious element to a, one of these rezones. So please reach out, invite me to come out if we got until March third to do that, and I would say invite all of my colleagues, because some of them are more inclined to trot on out to the, to the actual site and get some firsthand information about that.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for Jason, or want to make a motion on this?
Make a motion for second reading to March third.
Second, Nitzer.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Nitzer, to set a second reading for Tuesday, March third. Any discussion, Council? Councilor Starr?
Yeah, I, not this specifically, but this issue. We've gone through the Planning Commission, we've got the neighbors all worked up, we've done all this, and then we're saying that we're going to have a meeting with the neighbors between first and second, or get through first reading first, and then do the meeting before second reading. That's too late. That's what's causing the, the heartache for a lot of people, is that we wait too long to meet with the neighbors and get it taken care of, and I'm frustrated when we are talking about setting up a meeting in between first and second reading. That's the wrong order of the way this should be done. I'm still going to vote for second reading for the third, and hopefully we got a plan, but I'll be ready to defer on the third if we don't have something worked out by then.
Any other discussion, Council? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be inclined to defer it if it was next week, but I do agree with the point. We've got a couple of weeks, the meeting is set, and the notice has been out there for a month, so I guess if this was coming up right away, I'd maybe agree with Counselor Starr a little bit, but I think there is time, and the meeting's set, so I will go along with how it's set up as of now. Thank you.
All right, see, no further discussion. Let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item twenty-nine, please.
Item twenty-nine, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at fifteen oh seven South Norton Avenue from the R S Single Family Residential Suburban District to the R T two Town Home Residential Traditional District, number one one six zero one dash twenty twenty, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March third, twenty twenty.
The applicant and owner, owner here is Cindy Walter. It's located at fifteen oh seven South Norton Avenue. It's about point one three acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're correcting the zoning to match the current use of the property. It has been, it, it is currently a three-unit converted house. It was legally converted in nineteen ninety-six. We did have some concerns from the neighbors about that. We did do some site visits on this one, and it really does function as a three-unit converted house. There's a bedroom in the basement, and to actually access that bedroom, if it was a single-family, you'd have to go outside and come around a side door to get there. So it really does, it really does act as a three-unit converted house, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this? Counselor Nitzer?
I think I recall from the Planning Commission meeting, doesn't it have, maybe you said this, two or three kitchens as well, or not?
Yeah, it, the way that it works is, there's a kitchen in each unit, so there's an efficiency unit, I think one one-bedroom unit, and then one two-bedroom unit in the upper. So if you go in the main door, there's two bedrooms, there's two units through there, and then the one that you access the basement from the outside, so.
Okay, and I could go look this up, but maybe you know offhand in the nineteen eighty-three ordinance? Do you know what it was zoned, and was there conditional use, or how, how did that work before the conversion?
So this one's a little odd. It was zoned R D, or excuse me, it was zoned R S two under the old ordinance, which you could get a conditional use for a duplex. It was illegally converted to a four-unit back in mid nineteen nineties. The person converting it was stop work order, a stop work order was, was issued. Zoning and building looked at it and said, you know, you can only do a three-unit, threeplex, or you got to take one of the units out. So in nineteen ninety-six, then, the proper permits were issued, the proper zoning was there, all the parking to do a three-unit converted house on this thing. And then the owner, the old owner was going to zone it, rezon it to R D one under the old ordinance with the conditional use, however, he fell ill with cancer, and I believe passed away before that zoning could go through, and now the applicant is actually their kid, kids that are looking to sell it, so.
And so critically, when you did the conversion in twenty fifteen, this went into effect, it was, it was rezoned under the new ordinance to single-family.
Single-family, and it should have been zoned, in our staff's idea, it should have been zoned R T two, in our opinion, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Counselor Staley?
So Jason, what, what's the neighborhood objection to the correction?
Um, most of the, the objections from the neighbors is, is for the last about ten years, so for five years, the wife, so the husband and wife moved back here when he became ill, and they lived in this house. He passed away, and then the wife passed away, I believe, about five years ago, and it remained, it's remained empty for about five years, and now the kids have it, and they're looking at selling it. So I think a lot of the objection from the neighbors is, most of the neighbors moved in there within the last five to ten years, and they've seen it always as a single-family house because only one person has lived there, and that seems like more of their objections with that, but it really does function as a, as a triplex, as a three-unit converted house. It'd be very costly for somebody to go in there and try and change it to single-family. It'd be really hard.
Thanks, Jason. Other questions for Jason, Council? All right, I'd look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March third. Motion by Selberg on that?
Second Erickson.
Seconded by Erickson. Any discussion on this, Council? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item thirty, please.
Item thirty, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the northwest corner of East Twenty-Sixth Street and South Veterans Parkway from the O Office District to the S one General Institutional District, from the O Office District to the S1 General Institutional District, number 11596-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning commission recommends approval five to zero, and the recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
The applicant and owner here is Avara McKennan. It's located at the northwest corner of 26th Street and west, or excuse me, South Veterans Parkway. It's about 6.29 acres in size. They're looking at rezoning from the Office District to the S1 General Institutional District. They need to get, they're looking at constructing a new medical office building there, and it's going to be a little bit too tall for the Office District, so they need that larger form.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this item?
Move to set the second reading to Tuesday, March 3.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale on that. Any discussion, council? We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 31.
Item 31, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the amendment to an extension of the lease of city property to WR Restaurants Management LLC. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, March 3, 2020.
Good evening. Sean Pritchard with the Finance Department. So before you is a lease agreement amendment and extension. It's between the city and WR Restaurants Management LLC. It's actually related to the diner downtown. 15 years ago, we entered, city entered into a lease with WR Restaurants LLC to allow for a portion of our surface parking lot to be leased to them for purposes of setting the diner on there. It's been in place for 15 years. There is a five-year extension allowable for the existing agreement. It is exercisable by the leasing as opposed to the city. So there is really five years left on the lease. This is kind of a housekeeping item, so it amends the lease, but it updates the language to the nondiscrimination, makes it more compliant with our city ordinances as they presently are. So happy to entertain any questions you have.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for Sean on this one?
Move to approve. Oh, Councilmember Staley has a question.
Let's get a second, and then we can pull him up first. We have a second on that. Motion approved by Brecky and seconded by Selberg. Counselor Staley, you have a question for Sean?
Sean, can, what do we pay a year for that lease? Or what are they paying us for?
So originally, the lease had it down for $1,450 per month. It increases every other year. There's a couple of ways to look at it, but typically, it's been 2.5% increase on that. So they're presently paying about $1,854 a month, or about slightly over $22,000 a year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sean? Counselor Starr?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Does that go to the parking enterprise, then, or does that go to, where does the revenue-
Goes to the parking enterprise.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Selberg?
Do we have similar setups like this with any other restaurants downtown?
I am not aware of any other ones that we have of this kind, and it's a unique situation with the diner. It was relocated, I think, from along Louise Avenue to downtown when it was reset 15 years ago.
Okay. I thought it was kind of unique. All right. Thanks. Hey, and if you need a tie, I can set you up.
Counselor Staley?
So, Sean, this just came to my mind. Would, we're talking about selling surface parking lots downtown for density and to help development and also to help revenue for the parking enterprise fund?
I think there's been discussions about the surface parking lots for years-
Yes.
-for years, pre-dates this administration. Correct?
Well, we've heard about it more recently, in the last year. But what would be the possibility of looking at selling this? Wouldn't that fall into the same, this is a surface parking lot that we're leasing, so why, or why wouldn't we look at leasing these other parking lots as well? Maybe because that's a more, kind of a semi-permanent structure, the diner?
Yeah, it was a unique situation, I think, at the time. The location was appropriate, and they wanted to retain the diner and relocated it downtown.
But has there ever been a discussion about them buying that lot? Like, we're talking about selling it?
No, there hadn't been any, because the city still manages and operates the parking, the rest of the parking lot that is situated adjacent to it, to the west of that area, so that still is administered, leased out to parking users behind there. And I think there's maybe even some meters in that area. We have a buyout provision of the lease, should we exercise it, but it requires the city to buy out the personal property, including all the real property that's on the property, as well as some cash flow.
Oh, really?
So, but this item is, they have a five, the way this was approved 15 years ago, they have a right to extend it by five years. So we have a right to discuss renegotiating the lease in 2025, but at this point, they have the right to extend it by five years. The amendment, the reason it's come back to you is that they're agreeable to amend it to include some additional nondiscrimination statements that are more compliant with our current ordinance. So it is strictly a housekeeping item at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Any other questions for Sean? All right. Any discussion amongst the council? We have a motion in a second on the floor. See none. We'll take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 32.
Item 32, a resolution of intent to enter into a lease of municipal real property, 132 North Dakota Avenue.
Stacy, this one's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a notice of intent to enter into a lease of real property. This relates to the annex property immediately north of City Hall. This pursuant to SDCL 9-12-5.2, and is basically the notice provision required since statutorily this lease potentially would exceed 120 days and $500 in value.
All right. Anyone from the public who wish to speak on this item tonight? All right.